I call this the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the Lincoln County Commission to order. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Brother Ron Wood. Ron is the pastor at the Federal Church of God. And our pledge allegiance will be given by Anakin Cornwell. Anakin is a second grader in Ms. Toombs' class at Ralph Askens. Anakin loves playing outside, watching videos, doing art projects, and playing with Legos. And he attends the Federal ARP Church, and he's the son of Shannon Cornwell. If you would stand at this time for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
I want to thank the mayor and the commissioners for allowing me this privilege tonight to do this. You bow your heads and close your eyes, please. Father, our land is torn, and we need direction, we need hope, we need an answer. And I'm committed to the fact that you are the only answer that exists. We don't see each other as friend, and neighbor, and brother, and sister anymore. We see one another as competitor, opponent, enemy. And rage fills the streets, the cities. We may believe ourselves to be insulated from it here, but we're not, because it flows wherever it can. This little boy that stands beside me tonight, Lord Jesus, is a reflection of children all throughout this country today, that we don't want to see them grow up in the type of America that exists right now. I would have this young man grow up in a place that he didn't have to be armed, that he didn't have to be wary of everybody he saw, that he could reach his hand out to every man, every woman that he comes in contact with, and be in peace, and have hope, be excited about the new day coming. I can't make it happen, you can. And I'm asking you tonight, God, to pour out your Spirit upon us in this room, that as these commissioners do their job and take care of their business, that they do it in such a manner it's reflective of the will of the living God, and peace, and friendship, and reason is the rule of the day, not rage, and anger, and spite. So, Lord Jesus, we put this in your hands, and I pray that you bless these people with wisdom, and grace, and mercy, and peace. In Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you, Anakin, and thank you, Brother Ron. At this time, if you will, answer the electronic roll call.
They put an E in it.
Madam Clerk?
I have twenty-one commissioners present, three absent.
Twenty-one present, three absent. Thank you. At this time, Tyler Privet, will you stand up, please? Tyler is field representative for Senator Marsha Blackburn. Welcome, thank you for all you do, and your office, and Senator Blackburn. And Amy, if you'll stand up. Amy Dennis is the field representative for Congressman Dejarle, so thank you for all you do, and Congressman's office, too. So, welcome to Lincoln County Commission tonight, we thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion for approval of last month, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty minutes that were in your packet. Commissioner Bradford makes motion. Commissioner Dangerfield seconds. Any questions or comments on those minutes? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. You should have had twelve monthly committee meeting minutes, and seven quarterly committee minutes in your packet. So, our first item is a consideration for approval of a resolution honoring the memory of the late Ray Wilson Jacks. Mr. Jacks was a former Lincoln County Commissioner. At this time, Ed Sims, our county attorney.
Resolution honoring the memory of the late Ray Wilson Jacks, former member of the Lincoln County Legislative Body. On August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, the many friends and associates of Ray Wilson Jacks were saddened to learn of his death at the age of ninety-one. Whereas Ray Wilson Jacks was born on May twenty-nine, nineteen twenty-nine, in Elora, Lincoln County, Tennessee, the son of the late Raymond Ellis Jacks and Ruby Zell Harden Jacks. And whereas he was a graduate of Flintville High School, and served in the U.S. Army during the Korean Conflict as a jet engine mechanic. Whereas Mr. Jack's career with the U.S. Army Missile Command was with the U.S. Army Missile Command at Redstone Arsenal. Whereas Mr. Jack served as a Lincoln County Circuit Court Officer for twenty years. Whereas Mr. Jacks loved being outdoors, working on his farm, hunting, and rooting for the Atlanta Braves. Whereas Mr. Jacks was married to Nellie Ruth Finn Jacks for almost fifty-nine years, and they had three children, Marilyn Davis, Pamela Atkinson, and Andy Jacks, and grandchildren Wendy Thompson, Christopher Davis, and Alan Davis, and great-grandchildren Ben Thompson, Grant Thompson, Tennyson Davis, and Presley Davis. Whereas Mr. Jacks was a member of the Elora Baptist Church. Whereas Mr. Jacks served with distinction on the Lincoln County Legislative Body for three terms. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Lincoln County Legislative Body do hereby wish and desire to express to the family of Mr. Jacks our sincere condolences and sympathy, and to express to them, as well as his many friends and associates, our sincere appreciation for the many years of devoted and distinguished service rendered to Lincoln County and this community by Mr. Jacks. And be it further resolved that this resolution of respect and esteem be spread upon the minutes of the Lincoln County Legislative Body, and that a copy there be forwarded to his wife and children. This fifteenth of September, two thousand and twenty, signed William R. Newman, attest, Phyllis Counts.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Mishel makes motion. Commissioner Bryant, second set. All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. If the Jacks family will please stand. Dennis, Marilyn, Pamela, Andy is there, and Ms. Jacks, thank y'all for Mr. Jack's service to this county and his community, and we appreciate everything he did, and we appreciate y'all for the support that y'all gave him during the time of his service to our county. Thank you very much. Next item, consideration for approval to reappoint Jack Towery and Walter Sheridan to the Airport Authority. These terms would expire October, two thousand and twenty-five. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Spray makes motion. Commissioner Guin seconds. Any questions, comments on this? All those in favor of the reappointment, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously reappointed. Next item, consideration for approval to reelect Anthony Taylor and Dr. Theresa Morrison to the Health Facilities Committee. Those two terms would expire October, two thousand and twenty-three. What's the will of this commission on this item? Commissioner Guin makes a motion. Commissioner Dangerfield seconds. Any questions or comments on this? All those in favor of the reappointment, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously reappointed. Next item, consideration for approval to reelect Anthony Taylor and Dr. Theresa Morrison to the Health Facilities Committee. Those two terms would expire October, two thousand and twenty-three. What's the will of this commission on this item? Commissioner Guin makes a motion. Commissioner Dangerfield seconds. Any questions or comments on this item before we vote? All those in favor of approval of those two, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Our next item, Dale Pierce, Chairman of the Board of Main Street, will give a Main Street report at this time. Dale?
Status of Main Street right now is very positive. We're in the process of hopefully acquiring more board members. Some really good names have been brought up. See, our next meeting is coming Monday. We should have the results from our audit, see how things are financially, see if we can move forward. Our last, first Friday of the season is in October, and we'll stop until next year. We'll also have some activities going on during the host, if everything goes forward like it is. Any questions?
When is the meeting, where is the meeting Monday?
The meeting's five-thirty. The Main Street building is right over here, I think.
North Hill, in the Matthews Building.
Cross from please you. Well, anybody's welcome.
What about an introduction to your wife? Everybody in Lincoln County knows Dale Pierce, but not many know Jen Pierce, so...
That's my beautiful wife.
And quite supportive of him and all of his endeavors, and thank you for your support in Main Street also, Jen, because she's working just as hard as Dale is on making this successful.
Probably harder. He's better at that.
Thank both of you.
Thank y'all.
Budget Committee report. Donnie and Tori are out. Ms. Marie, Donnie's sister, passed away suddenly, and they are out because of that, and it's our regrets to all the Ogle's and their family. So, our Budget Committee report tonight will be our Finance Director, Cole Bradford. Cole?
Thank you. The Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, met pursuant to due notice in the library at Lincoln Central Academy on September first, two thousand and twenty, at six P.M. Members present were Shirley Dangerfield, Greta Revis, Kate Guin, Donnie Ogle, Randy Bradford, Doug Cunningham, Steve Graham. Member absent was Ricky Bryant. Others present were County Mayor Bill Newman, Finance Director Cole Bradford, County Attorney Ed Sims, Sheriff Murray Blackwelder, Lieutenant Jeff Bradford, Commissioner David Sanders, Commissioner Mark Mitchell, Commissioner Stephanie Britt, and Chris Guin with Elk Valley Times. Item one, Mayor Newman presented the attached MediaCom Franchise Agreement. Motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the attached franchise agreement between Lincoln County, Tennessee, and MediaCom Southeast LLC.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas seconds it. Any questions on this contract? It's a five-year contract, same percentage as before, five percent of their intake. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously passed. Cole?
Item two, Sheriff Blackwelder presented the following items. A, letter of agreement amendment, it's attached. Sheriff Blackwelder confirmed that the positions he is asking to be funded at zero, but the position slot to be left on the agreement will entail him coming before the commission for funding of these positions if he determines they are needed at some point in the future. Motion by Commissioner Guin, seconded by Commissioner Ogle, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of Sheriff Blackwelder's attached letter of agreement amendment request.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Guin makes a motion. Commissioner Douglas seconds. Any questions on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved.
Item B, purchase of VMA building using E-SIG funds. Motion by Commissioner Guin, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the request, an increase one oh one dash fifty-four four ten dash seven ninety-one by eight thousand six hundred and forty-eight thousand, and decrease one oh one dash thirty-four six twenty-five by eight thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Guin makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield. Any questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Unanimously approved.
Item three, Finance Director Bradford presented the following items. A, unclaimed property resolution. Motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Revis, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the attached unclaimed property resolution.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Tyler makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Bradford. Any questions on this item? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Cole?
Item B, one forty-one general purpose school fund budget amendment. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the attached one forty-one general purpose school fund budget amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Hunter makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Revis. Any questions on this item or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Cole?
Item C, one oh one general fund budget amendment for the county clerk. This will be using some of her data processing money earmarked for that purpose. Motion by Commissioner Ogle, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the attached one oh one general fund budget amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Hunter makes a motion. Commissioner Ashley seconds. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Cole?
Item D, information item. There's a possibility of the Finance Department being able to relocate to the Board of Education's old central office building located next to the Ralph Hastings Building. This relocation would allow Planning, Zoning, IT, and Maintenance to move their offices to the current Finance Department location in the courthouse. The Financial Management Committee approved the relocation, subject to School Board approval. The School Board meets on September eighth, two thousand and twenty. This is an information item at this time. The School Board will be voting on that item next month, in October. Item four, Mayor Newman presented the Financial Management Committee's recommendation concerning the attached easement request, along with additional information provided by Planning, Zoning Director Harris. The following motion by Commissioner Revis was seconded by Commissioner Ogle, and approved by a vote of seven yes, one absent. The county would sell to Mr. Lonnie Abels a fifty-foot wide, non-exclusive right-of-way on the north end of a tract of land owned by the Lincoln County Board of Public Utilities on Old Melana Road, Seplat. The right-of-way would be for ingress and egress, with rights for twenty foot of the right-of-way on the south side of the fifty-foot to be used for utilities. Once property is used for egress-ingress, Mr. Abels is required to build and maintain the road. If the county's right of use of such road was exercised, the county would be required to assume fifty percent of maintenance of the road. The price for the right-of-way is fifty thousand dollars, with the proceeds deposited in the county general fund. Surveying and legal expenses would be paid fifty-fifty by seller and buyer. Recording fees would be a buyer's expense.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Revis makes a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Cole?
That was all the business.
Alrighty. Job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Notary Publix, Madam Clerk?
Leslie Price by Commissioner Young, Angela Phelps by Commissioner Young, Diane Gross, Teresa G. Reese, and Danielle Gross by Commissioner Cunningham, William B. Gallant by Commissioner Bryant, Ricky L. Kimbrough by Commissioner Cunningham, Jamie White by Commissioner Bradford, Holly Norton by Commissioner Spray, Jerry Richardson by Commissioner Martinez, Dora Barnes by Commissioner Thorb.
Any additions to that list? No additions, I would entertain a motion that those be approved. Commissioner Douglas makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Britt. Thank y'all. Any questions or comments on this list as read? Not, all those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Now, we move into new business, and I have three items that, first, will be Steve Guntenberg.
I'm not looking for any kind of motion tonight, but what I am looking for is a twenty-eight cent problem. Any y'all know what that twenty-eight cent problem is? It's our wheel tax. That's what it costs each resident in Lincoln County, twenty-eight cents a day for wheel tax. The last time we raised our wheel tax was for property tax. We didn't want a property tax, and the only fair tax would be to raise the wheel tax, which we did. I'm all in favor of it. I don't mind paying my wheel tax. I wouldn't care if it was twice that. But anyhow, the problem is, we have a lot of residents here in Tennessee, I mean, Lincoln County, that are not paying the wheel tax. The Department of Education's suffering, the Sheriff's Department is suffering, roads are suffering, and I've already talked to our financial advisor. We're losing thousands of dollars. Now, I want this commission to brainstorm some idea on how to cure this. I've had constituents call me and tell me, hey, I'm gonna find some way to go to Coffey County, Lincoln County, Rosford County, Alabama, so I won't have to pay this wheel tax. Twenty-eight cents is not gonna break anybody. I think I lose that much in pocket change every day. That's ridiculous for people to have that idea. Now, I was told that one way that we can solve about ninety percent of this, and it's gonna take Ed to correct me on this, if we require, before schools start next year, we can't do anything this year, but we can sure do something before school starts next year, is to require every parent, when they enroll a student in any Lincoln County school, to provide, now here's where Ed might come in, a utility bill and proof of owner registration of the car. Now, I don't know if that's legal or not, I was told it probably wasn't, but I'm putting the ball in your pocket. Now, we need to stop this. Everybody in here pays their wheel tax. I don't like paying it, but I know where it's going, and it's going for a good use. We don't want our property tax to go back up just because we got a lot of people living here that are not paying it. Charles Hunter over here, he has the authority to stop at anybody's house and say, hey, clean this mess up, or you go to court. Now, that's funny that we can't do the same thing. We can pass an ordinance or a law, this commission can. Oh, but somebody says the Department of Education will buck up against it. Hey, we are the lawmakers and the ordinance makers of Lincoln County. There's no other entity in this county that we have to bow down to and do what they say do. We have the authority. We are the legislative body. There's got to be something done. I run a bus route. I've been driving for twenty-three years. I have taken lists of tag numbers and turned them in, and I know people that they're on my route that's been there two or three years, that's got Frank County tags. Now, that's ridiculous. If it has to have an ad hoc committee to get this thing started before school starts next year, and get Dr. Heath involved in this, we should do so. Because I don't want to be part of the problem. I want to be part of the solution. It's for all of the residents of Lincoln County. And it's a shame that we can't do anything about it. Oh, our hands are tied. No, our hands are not tied. We can do something. And I appreciate your time for listening to me. I don't come up here very often. Well, let's put it this way, I don't think I've ever stood before this commission. I've always listened to other people, I've took what they said to heart, and I tried to pass my vote that would benefit everybody in the county. But boy, when it turns up that it's not benefiting the residents of Lincoln County, I'm not gonna be a part of the problem. I'll be back up here and say, here it is, let's do something. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. You do a good job, too. He's doing his job, let's do ours.
Thank you, Commissioner Guntenberg.
Yes, sir. You have forty-five minutes.
Sir?
I'd be recognized by the commission to speak on this issue.
Not at this time, we've got a couple of other items, but if you have a commissioner request that you can speak, yes, but we got two more items that I've got on the agenda, but...
Who needs I have a double?
Well, you're out of order right now, I've got a couple of other things. I will recognize you, though, later. The next item we have on here is Doug Campbell, EMA Director, and our chief of our volunteer fire department. And he has an announcement and an honor that has come to our Lincoln County Volunteer Fire Departments.
Good evening. I appreciate just a few minutes here. We presented to our fire EMA Committee last Tuesday night, and once again, this year, our volunteers were recognized by the Tennessee Fire Codes Enforcement Academy for training hours that they had put in. These are training hours that they have put in above and beyond what they do at their station, running phone calls, and responding to emergencies here in the county. Combined total over the last year was twelve-hundred-and-sixty-three hours, that was through the Fire Academy in Deason. There's roughly six-hundred-and-forty-three fire departments in the state of Tennessee. There were only fifty-four departments out of those that made the Elite Club. The Elite Club is divided into three different groups, the platinum level. The platinum level only had nine departments, and they were all career departments. The gold level had fourteen departments in it. They were made up of mainly all-career or combination departments, and a combination department where they have both paid and volunteers on their staff. The silver level had thirty-one departments in it, and of those thirty-one departments, Lincoln County placed nineteenth of the thirty-one. Some of those were career departments, some of them were volunteer, and some of them were combination. But I think it's a pretty good testament to what the volunteers of this county have given to the county. They're not only running about seventeen-hundred calls a year for free, and responding to emergencies at all hours of the night, but they're taking a lot of training, too. So, and this is only the training that's recognized through the Fire Academy. That counts none of the medical training, or extrication training, or any of the other TEMA training that they take. This is simply firefighter training through the Tennessee Fire Academy. So, I have one of our volunteers here tonight, he is with our Delros Station, and I appreciate him coming out. Y'all were given a copy of the certificate, I think, via email. We did not get it to you in time to come out in your packet, so I apologize for that. But I appreciate you allowing me a few minutes and present this information to you, and I'll answer any questions if you might have them.
And I would entertain a motion that we recognize them and attach this certificate to our minutes. Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion. Commissioner Douglas seconds that. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of recognition for this honor to our volunteer fire department, and that this be attached to the minutes, please say aye. Any opposed? Unanimously approved. Now, if you got questions or comments for Doug, I will... Commissioner Douglas?
Chief, on the other official training that you spoke of, about how many hours per volunteer does that take that's not recognized? volunteer does that take that's not recognized by this certificate?
The EMR class is a minimal 60 hours that they have to take in order to get their license. They have to pass a, uh, national registry test in order to get their EMR license. Uh, that's a pretty tough test. It has probably about an 80% pass/fail rate on it right now. And then they are required every two years just to maintain their license to do a 16-hour recertification class, plus maintain a, uh, four-hour CPR class. That's just on the EMR. Extrication, the extrication recertification class is anywhere from eight to 12 hours, and a full extrication class is 40 hours. So, um, and I don't have those hours there because they're not recorded yet, and we're trying to get our spreadsheets put together to have it. Uh, this is information that the Fire Academy records and sends out to us, so it's one, one thing that I didn't have to try to keep up with right now. Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Anybody else? Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the job, and I, I just want to give another compliment is, uh, as we've gone through this COVID-19 ordeal, uh, his office has kept me informed. It's made my job a lot easier than it would have been if I had to search out all the details that I'm able to inform the public. So, thank you for what you do, what Steve does and Paula does, uh, your whole department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, next item is, you should have received a copy of the Performance Bond for the sub, uh, excuse me, Cedar Grove subdivision. Did anyone not receive that? It's on the Performance Bond, about halfway down. The reason this is presented to you, it says that the Performance Bond is accepted by the local governing body, so, uh, I would need a motion, uh, for us accepting that. Um, and, um, Tim Gill, our Highway Superintendent, he has researched that, and that's, uh, the figure that he thought. Commissioner Cunningham, are you making that motion? Do I have a second? Commissioner Gillen seconds it. Any questions about this? This is the first major subdivision we've had in a while, so this is a reason you haven't seen this document before. So, um, anybody got questions? If not, all those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Now, I wa, is there a commissioner that wants to commi- Okay, any objection to Adam Butler being recognized to address the commission for five minutes? You can come to the speaker here, sir.
Commissioners, my name's Adam Butler. I'm a local resident here in Lincoln County. I'm 22 years old. Uh, this is actually my first time coming here. Uh, Mr. Doug invited the volunteer firefighters to come, and I figured I'd come and sit in. Been interesting. Uh, thank you again for recognizing me. I really appreciate it. Uh, sitting here and listening to the gentleman talking about the pole tax, or the wheel tax, my apologies, the wheel tax, um, I understand where he's coming from. I do. It's never fair when you pay a tax and someone else doesn't. But a couple of things that he said in a way that he asked for it to be fixed made my blood run cold. I feel it's my duty as a citizen, as an American, to remind commission and any elected official that there is a power they answer to. It's the people. At the end of the day, no matter what, every last one of us will answer to the people in reelection, in our day-to-day lives, in our responsibilities to uphold all we hold dear. Now, with a tax, it's not appropriate, let's be quite fair. No one likes taxes, right? Who here likes taxes? Yeah, exactly. Okay, no one. If a tax is being evaded or avoided, generally it's, it seems to fall in a couple of different categories, as I've been taught. A, people believe the tax to be overwhelming. Now, I did the math real fast. Uh, if the gentleman's math is correct, of 28 cents a day, it's $102. That's honestly not that bad. I'll be honest. It, a lot worse, could be a lot worse. Um, which leads me to believe that it may be the second situation. They do not understand where the tax money is going, so they do not understand the benefit that the tax will allow. This, I believe, to be most likely the case, 'cause I didn't know where the tax was going until a few minutes ago. And, you know, I've been here seven years. I'm, I'm young, but, you know, I'd like to think I'm not too oblivious. So, if the committee does consider a, a motion or move to make the tax hard to evade, I would strongly advise against making it a punitive measure. Quite frankly, that will do nothing but make it, make people resent the tax and push for its toll dismissal, I would say. If anything, I would attempt to raise awareness about what the tax will be used for, and to try to gain public sentiment. Obviously, this gentleman knows what it'll be used for. He's for it. Now that I know a little bit about what it's used for, I'm for it. But if I didn't know what it'd be used for, I'd be against having to go up 100 bucks just to have a car, you know, and be able to drive it in the county with tax, because it wouldn't make sense to me otherwise, until I know what it's being used for. So, that was my main thing right there. I felt a requirement as a citizen to, to say something, because we see too much in this government right now of politicians and leaders forgetting that they do have someone they answer to. Us. All the citizens. So, that's my big piece. Uh, I have nothing further. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
One of the things, um, the only tax that this body can raise without a public referendum is property tax, and this tax was voted and passed by the public. But now, far as the way that that money is dispensed, can you get, it's, do you not, do you off the top of your head know how we split that?
I mean, it's readily available. Phyllis is off this mic.
We can get that to you and, and, and give those figures, because it doesn't go, it is specific what it's used for.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and we'd be happy to get that to you.
My biggest thing is I would suggest if we were going to do, if the commission was going to do anything to try to make it to where the, the tax is more readily enforced, if that's within y'all's purview. My big point is, don't make it where it's like an extra fine, something like that. Even just a little pamphlet that's handed out when you renew your tax says this is what your tax goes to, would, I believe, be extremely beneficial.
Okay.
Because it will, will make people not want to have to avoid it.
I think it's a good point. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other, any other new business items? Uh, Commissioner Brown, were you raising your hand? Yes?
I need to add Marsha Stevens, Stevens Bridges, and Candace Deloris to the other review.
Okay. That's already passed, but because it's you, we're gonna allow it. Okay. Did you get the names?
Who was the first one, Ben?
Marissa Stevens Bridges.
Okay.
I got the second one.
Okay. Okay. Uh, would, would you be so kind to make the motion of that approval, then? I make a motion that those two names be approved as notary publix. Made notary publix. Do I have a second? Commissioner Cunningham seconds it, 'cause he doesn't want you to punch him. Uh, we can have fun and still carry on business. Anybody objecting to those two names before we vote? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? Unanimously approved. Any other new business, or is it Commissioner Cunningham's turn to say something? Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas makes a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.